We're recording.
All right. Okay, welcome everyone. It is January 22nd. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. My name is Rich Nagel and I'll be presiding at the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do you have attendance?
Are there agendas?
I'm sorry, did Laura hand it some out? I will apologize. I have the one that came with the packet, but it usually is not up to date. Okay, well we'll wait for him to get back. Might as do a roll call. Councilmember Cowal.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Shesky.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Four members here. Councilmember Haddelstedt is ill this evening and will not be joining us. City Administrator Melvin had just stepped out for a few minutes to my, who'd be to my left. To my right, Ross Arneson is usually occupying that chair and he is not feeling well tonight, so he will not be here. In the audience, Bruce from RSS, Mandos Sibley Sanitation, welcome Bruce. Chief Pedersen, welcome. And Sarah Burton, our ambulance director, welcome. Kurt Mank from the Arlington Enterprise also is with us tonight. So, I think we'll wait right now for City Administrator Melvin. There might be some changes in the agenda that he would like to bring up.
Maybe we could all just tell a joke while we're waiting?
Go ahead.
I was gonna start with Ben.
Well, Ben always has one.
You caught me unaware.
Well, you heard about the guy and girl got stuck in a revolving door and they started going around together?
My favorite.
I did know.
My favorite, she was only the moonshiner's daughter, but I loved her still.
Gee, Adam.
I got nothing.
Tell a car joke.
I got nothing.
A car joke. A used car salesman joke.
Will we lock them on?
We need to fix it so somebody could get in if they need to. Sorry about that. Laura and I were working together and that's one of the things that we left out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the one I'm looking for. All right, the introductions have been done and roll call has been taken, so we will move into the agenda. Changes in the agenda. The only ones I have so far would be to cross off item, under the consent agenda, item D and item E. D and E. Do you have any others?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Cowal to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda then this evening consists of five items. Item A, approval of the October 17th council workshop minutes. Item B, approval of the October 24th special council minutes. Item C, approval of the November 19th regular council minutes. And then would be item D, approval of John Pedersen, Sarah Jankowski, Ally Padraza, Zach Peterson, and Erin Pauley as new EMTs for Arlington Ambulance pending successful completion of the written EMT test. And then, item E, the bills. Those are the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowal, second by Councilmember Highland to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Are there any citizens wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, move on to announcements. Councilmembers, first announcement is the meeting which is scheduled for January 24th at 7:00 PM. That'll be a meeting with the townships in Green Isle regarding the fire ambulance coverage for 2020. So that'll be seven o'clock at the emergency services building. Notice has been sent out to all those who are invited. I will also have, Sarah Burton will be there as well as Fire Chief John Zaski. And that will be treated as a special city council meeting according to the agenda? Nope, that will be a, just a, basically a meeting with the townships and with Green Isle. It's typically what we've done in the past.
I've gone to the meetings.
Okay.
So councilmembers on the committees maybe?
Okay. So it says special city council meeting, so we're gonna have to. Okay. Has that been posted as such? That's something that Laura had completed and so. Okay, well. I believe that it has. I will double check. If there's a quorum there, that would probably have been necessary anyhow. Yes, yeah. All right. It'll be treated as a special council meeting. Thank you for calling that to my attention. The second item is the Lake of Minnesota Cities Experienced Officials 2019 Leadership Conference, which will be February 1st through 2nd in Plymouth and February 22nd and 23rd in Brainerd. At this time, we've got three council members who are planning to attend. Looking at the agenda, it looks like there's going to be a bit of a focus on communication and how to work with staff and your counterparts to achieve different goals, so if anybody else is interested in attending, please reach out and let me know and we will go ahead and take care of the registration. Individual council members are responsible for arranging their lodging per city policy. So, if there's anything we can help with, please let us know. The third item is that city offices will be closed on Monday, February 18th for the President's Day holiday. Similar to what we experienced this week, the council meeting will then be delayed for one day and scheduled for Tuesday, February 19th at 6:30 to account for that. So, that's the end of the announcements. Okay, any questions on the announcements?
Third, say the fire ambulance, is that a requirement of the council? Because I have something else scheduled for that evening.
Not really required, no.
Typically at that meeting, John Zaski, the fire chief and the ambulance manager usually just goes over the same and brings the same report here to us. It's just them sharing with the townships and stuffs. Typically is what happens there. Same thing that happens here.
Then I'd be all right if I missed that then.
Yep, it'll come before the council following this meeting on Thursday. Okay, anything else? All right, move on to communications. First item is a report from People's Service Incorporated with regards to water and wastewater operations. This should be included in a packet in front of you. The one thing I would like to call to your attention, if you look on page two, it is the fifth bulleted item down on that page in which it just reads, "Exercised all equipment in the emergency backup trailer to make sure that there is proper operation and winterized all the pumps." The reason why I bring that to your attention is because that was an issue of concern previously in dealing with the unfortunate situation where we had some some water issues that they didn't have equipment that was ready to go, so I'm very happy to see that they are taking a good look at that and making sure that that equipment is ready to go should we need it for any sort of emergency situation. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Otherwise, if you look at the bar charts, average daily water pumped is pretty consistent with what we saw in 2017. And as you look at the average daily wastewater pump, we're up slightly from where we were in 2017. And then the last couple pages show you the chemical readings on the sewage as well as the water. So, are there any questions that I can answer at this time on the report?
Someday I have to get Lee in here to explain these chemical readings and, you know, sometime we have about three, four hours to.
I can certainly schedule him for our next meeting. How's that sound?
Could you just buy him a cup of coffee some morning and go over the same material?
We'll designate you as our official representative. No, we can certainly.
You know, I could take that and run with it for a week.
We can certainly have Lee just stop in and have some more detailed discussion with us about those numbers.
Sometimes, sometimes there's nothing else on the agenda that would be kinda nice to know what those numbers mean. Okay, I take it we're within the limits.
Yes, yeah. Some of those numbers, I know that there's been some discussion lately. We are working with city engineer Jason Fenright and we are scheduling a meeting with representatives from the MPCA. There has been recently a change in the allowed limits of phosphorus as well as chloride. And so, the city through our water treatment facility is able to meet the new limits with regards to phosphorus. However, we're going to end up probably requesting an extension for five years to take a look at the chloride. There currently is, this is my understanding from Lee, there currently is no way for us to address our chloride levels in Arlington other than for us to simply treat the water before it goes out to the residents. The number one contributor to chloride is the water softeners that put the water, salt water, into our waste system. So, the cost to go ahead and treat our water before we send it out to residents would be over a million dollars. And currently there aren't a whole lot of funding opportunities out there to assist us with bringing our facility up to that level. So we'll be having a meeting coming up and we will be discussing with the MPCA further what steps we can take to get that five-year extension. Hopefully in five years, there'll be either grant money available or a solution that is more within our grasp, less than a million dollars that would take to treat the water before it goes out, so. Good. Building report. Moving on to building report, as you can tell, for December of 2018, we had a total of six improvement projects that were totaling $33,000 in costs. The largest of those was a $20,000 project that involved replacement of windows and siding. So, three of those six projects did include window installation. Are there any questions on the December building report?
If I could request that maybe the font be a little bit bigger or in a different format. It's kinda hard to read.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
I can certainly break it down and put it, you know, over to two different paragraphs in essence.
Or get rid of some of the information we don't need, like we don't need to know. What was it that had, like A3 in there?
Yeah, there's some idle columns probably that don't get used, if we could. Yeah, okay. Okay. So just name, address, what it was, and dollar amount, I suppose, that would pretty much give us what we look at. Okay.
I was even turning my bifocals upside down. Don't laugh.
Upside down.
Well, yeah, so that when I'm looking at the screen, I can look up.
It's easier to see sometimes.
Those laughing are the ones that don't have bifocals.
I have them on my case right now.
Oh, do you really? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, if you're working under a dashboard in your car and you're trying to look up and then you have to turn them upside down. It's an old trick you'll have to learn as you get older.
You got some time yet?
It comes pretty quick.
Okay. If there are no more questions on the building report, I will make that adjustment so that the font is larger next time. We'll then move on to the expense report for the month of December. In front of you, you should have an updated list with comments over in the right-hand column. And I'll just go quickly through each section, identifying those that are significantly lower or higher and providing you with a brief explanation as to why. The council budget in 2018 came in under budget by about 20% based on discussions that we had about computer equipment, holding off on that, as well as lack attendance in various seminars. Administration came in under budget. We had less insurance premiums. And then we did have increased wages for 2018. Law, legal services, we had more legal work that we did with city attorney Ross Arneson. Planning and zoning, we had significantly more time spent doing inspections. Good problem to have, but that means things are being developed, but at the same time you're having to pay more for Darren's time. We also had an increase in buildings and plant and that was for the work that was done on the TSE building, which was unplanned for. So overall, in terms of the general fund, overall administration came in just slightly under budget. Looking at public safety, the police department came in slightly under budget. We had fire stations in buildings that came in higher. State aid actually came in higher than what was originally budgeted. Civil defense, we had more expenses because of a siren that had to be repaired and was not anticipated. Moving on down, you can see Public Works Streets came in under budget. They had lowered building repair costs as well as gas and repair costs that were lower. Parks and Recreation, one of the challenges that we had in 2018 was that the 2017 payment did not get paid until 2018. So, in essence, we made two payments that year simply because of the timing. So additional money was incurred there and then we also had a tree grant for which we are anticipating receiving some reimbursement for. So. Libraries, likewise, we had some challenges with billing because this was in 2017. That was the year that it switched over to the county. And in the process, we had to square away some billing issues. Those resulted in us not paying the 2017 library expense until 2018. So, we're looking at two, two of those bills paid in 2018 resulting in the overage. Economic development, we had less spent on their budget simply because of money that they did not use. Looking at other financing and transfers, we previously had a discussion about the transfers that were shifting over to the fire and the ambulance and recommended that those transfers be lower because they were able to do a better job of covering their operating costs with existing funds. So we didn't feel it was necessary to transfer as much into those areas. Under public safety, looking at the fire fund, they were at about 80% of budget. They've had lower insurance premiums, lower expenses with regards to building repair, and lower costs for gear. The ambulance fund, wages were under budget resulting in that budget being 20% lower than initially anticipated. Tax abatement, this is another situation where 2017 amount was paid in 2018. So in essence, we paid two years' worth in 18 because of the delayed payment in 17. The community center, we incurred additional costs there for the alarm replacement, which was something that we had not anticipated but had to be done, as well as the slabjacking, which had been talked about for some time. EDA loan programs, additional funds were used there because of the daycare loans as well as the FASHA loans to businesses to fix up that portion of their building, as well as the work that we put into planning and preparing for an industrial park. So that would be basically some of the engineering costs associated with that industrial park. The 2005 revolving loan fund, we had some loan satisfactions that were taken care of resulting in that being just a slight bit more than what we anticipated. Looking down to the cemetery, just a slight bit more expensive. We try and predict, but obviously what's happening at the cemetery is not something we can predict with a whole lot of accuracy, so. 115% of budget at year-end for that account. Moving down to the enterprise funds. Looking at the sewer, came in at 130% of budget. That was based on the fact that we purchased a Jetter in 2018 and that we prepaid some of the 2009 bond that we had outstanding. Jumping down then to Storm Sewer, we made our final payment on the 6A Project 13 tile project. So. Spent a little bit more there, but that's to finalize that bond. Shifting over to the third page. Looking at the 2014 Electric Construction Fund. This is a final payment of 102,483, so we will have closed out that fund in 2018. Looking at our debt service funds. You can see we're all, we're looking at 100% with the exception of the 2009 Geo Improvement Account. There, we made a partial bond payment, so we had extra money and went ahead and allocated that to make a payment and bring down the interest that we will have to pay over the long run. With the 2017 Improvement Fund, we did not have a budget adopted for 2018. And I should just make a note that the debt service funds, those numbers should read 2018 budget and 2018 actual at the top on that heading. So, we are talking 18 numbers, not 17. So total expenses then for 2018 came in just slightly over what we predicted, 101% for a total of $89,043 over what was initially budgeted for 2018. Questions? No questions? Okay, we shall move on. I have number eight, police report, December. Chief Pedersen, would you come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening. So, did the, no, is it attached to everything too? Okay, so we're working off the same thing. Uh, just to go over real quick, I guess the statistics that we're doing monthly, uh, we keep these out again very thorough and um, I guess the point to be made on all of these is that the increase from last year, twenty seventeen, was a hundred and seventy-eight for the month of December. Calls for service or contacts, and uh, for this year, we had three hundred and seventeen for December. So, again, of all of those that are listed in there, um, I think we have a lot more traffic stops and with snow removal and everything else, the parking violations and ordinance contacts that we have are just consistently high numbers. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of those numbers. Pretty dry. Um, year to date, from January to December of twenty eighteen, we had three thousand three hundred and eight. Um, and in twenty seventeen, we had two thousand two hundred and sixty-one. So with the increased officers of time being spent, uh, that's kind of what we're staying busy with.
Can you tell me what a warrant check is? I know what an arrest is, but a warrant check?
A lot of times, um, pretty much every day, court uh, has their you know, bring somebody in and, and they'll listen to a case, and if somebody doesn't show up, they'll uh, put on an arrest warrant for them. So, we're just going to go check their addresses or check other locations, friends' houses that they might be at, and try and pick them up to quickly uh, get them into the court system.
Okay.
So, checks can be checking at a park, checking at a house, uh, many different things.
Okay.
So, moving on from that, I just wanted to make a note that, um, you know, we had the oh, pharmaceutical drop-off this year, and it was pretty successful. And in addition to that, we were contacted by the Minnesota Polition, Pollution Control, and they were looking to find some more drop boxes in the area. So they had a grant, and it looks like we're going to be getting our own drop box as we had talked about. Uh, it's just gonna be a matter of having to uh, follow the agency's disposal requirements, which are gonna be pretty plain and simple, they spell out where you take it to and um, how you process it, but we're gonna have to find a location to secure that. So we'll have to maybe look at, either we do it just inside of our entryway area so that it's in our building and not open to the public. Um, and/or in the entryway, it's supposed to be a secure box, so I just kinda have a problem with leaving it unattended from the times that somebody's not in the building. I guess I'd rather have it where they can slide it into our office and then we put it in the secure box and it's not this. Or we have to get into a routine of emptying it maybe every third day or something pretty regular. So, I was kind of excited to, about getting that, seeing as how we did have such a successful pharmaceutical turnout from the, the community. So, um, and we're also going to be posting that on our Facebook page. If the city wants to um, add that in a too, I guess we could look to get it put in there.
Chief, is there a big issue on disposing of the products or getting them to where, uh, the drugs that are turned in, where they need to go to be processed?
So, what kinda came to educate me when we did that whole process was the nursing homes in town. Any place that you have a large number of elderly people that are on medications, um, they expire, they the medications and some people. And when that happens, they need to dispose of those, and uh, a couple of the nursing homes were going all the way to Gaylord and having to get rid of them, and they would fill that box every time they came in. So, I, I do think we'll be able to provide a service to them and, and be able to secure those items and get them more frequently dis- disposing of them and getting them out of the facility, so.
Okay.
Uh, and then in addition to that, we had some of the apartment complexes that people came down and they said, you know, this saves us a, a trip over to Gaylord, it may not be far, but they don't always have the ability to get on the scooter and drive over there or catch a ride with somebody too, so I think, I think will be a benefit to the, the community.
So what's the next step then? Box needs emptying, where does it, somebody come and pick it up, or?
There's some options, so DEA has set some guidelines as far as disposal sites, one of them happens to be down in Mankato. And when we did our initial this summer, our drop site with the DEA program was up in um, Alexandria. And I was surprised that I drove it up there and physically handed it off to them, but they made you sign in, sign out. They weighed the car, weighed everything before you came in and when you left, and so it was, they took it very serious about accountability for what was being disposed of at their site. So, I think wherever we go, it's probably gonna be along those same lines, but we don't have to take it to those locations every, you know, three days. We just need to accumulate it and then monthly get rid of it.
So it would, it would take staff time?
Yes, yeah, it would.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll have to make some arrangements for that, but I, I don't think it's gonna be a huge inconvenience. We could also coordinate with the county when they do their disposal.
Mm-hmm.
So. I think it's gonna work out.
Yeah.
Do, do any other cities? Does Gaylord or Winthrop or Greenmount that, anybody?
Well, Gaylord's is at the sheriff's department, so the jail takes care of theirs.
Okay.
And as far as uh, Winthrop or any of the others on the west side of the county, that I don't know.
Okay.
I would guess that they rely on what's at the county.
Mm-hmm.
So. There we go. That brings up the speed study, um, we did get our results back on December twenty-seventh. And there was no changes, as to everybody pretty much told me that was the expectation. Um, we had a few different discussions about it, and they agreed to put the counters back out. And I, I think you guys had an attachment of all of the results. They were pretty comparable to the ones that they had done in um, June twenty-eighth of twenty seventeen. And prior to that, one was completed in twenty-ten. So, I guess just to kind of reiterate, from twenty-ten to twenty-seventeen, the result of that study was they did reduce the posted forty-five miles per hour um, on highway five, down to forty mile an hour. And then they extended it out past the Senex gas station. Um, between twenties, uh, two thousand six and twenty-fifteen, they detailed that there were seven crashes. And apparently that's not enough to establish changing it or dropping it or pushing it out even further. And what was a little bit more frustrating was the more recent studies, um, recorded a total of six crashes, so actually less. And two that were incapacitating injuries and four that were just property damage only. So I think when they look at the reduction of speed and, and maintaining a slower speed, getting pushed out to the edge of town, their concerns are primarily injuries. The rest of it is not that serious. The other thing is, is one of those accidents was actually at Chestnut and Five, which isn't even, it, it was the thirty mile an hour zone. So, the state, when they looked at the totality of all of this, there's, they're not seeing anything that generates the need to slow people down, getting further out in that area. I would just revisit the conversation we had last time when they first brought this up, where if there were changes that were gonna be made in the city, if we put a bike path in, something that would generate more pedestrian traffic along that route between um, the Senex and down by the Quick Shop, they would revisit and, and look at that pedestrian traffic, but I think what didn't work to our advantage either was they did this study throughout, what, uh, is it August? No, uh, September, October to December, when we first started talking about this. And I don't think there's much foot traffic during, you know, those colder months anyways, even going out to Dollar General, which was a point that I was trying to argue and, and trying to push to get it to slow down. Or at least the slower speeds to be pushed out further. So, we could go through this, um, they did a very thorough job, uh, I was impressed actually with the information that they provided. It's pretty much a copy of the one they did in twenty-seventeen. Few statistics have changed, but generally the speeds are about the same, the locations are about the same as to where traffic is going through town at what speeds. So, I guess we're just gonna have to rely on uh, you know, extra enforcement and maintaining those speeds right out to the edge of town. To try and keep people moving slower through town. I didn't know how much more time you wanted to spend on any of this. Okay. Um, I think that was it. Uh, number four, I have a request, I guess, um, or consideration. We do have in the city policy an approval for outside employment. And I would think that that would include for the police department as well. Um, Officer Knoxen is requesting, as do many officers throughout the state of Minnesota, that during the state fair, uh, he'd be allowed to take some extra time and do some police enforcement in a pretty busy, pretty active area. Um, so I had typed up a request, uh, just getting the council's approval to allow James to go and uh, help with that timeframe. So it looks like it's about uh, twelve days from August twenty-second to September second. And he'd be looking at doing about eight to, eight to ten shifts. If any of those shifts fill into a time where he's scheduled to work, he would take vacation or P T O. Uh, and looking forward, my expectations would be we would have enough officers to cover his vacation and P T O, at which I also wouldn't regulate what he's doing on his time off, as long as it's a good representation of the city and the police department here. Which I do believe he will be doing, um, as he does here. So I don't know that that needs to be a, a voted item, uh, or how you would prefer to handle that.
Is it, is it dealt with pretty well in policy already?
It is, yes.
So if the city's policy is in place.
Yeah.
I would think that.
The, I guess the one thing I wanted to make you guys aware of is that he would be wearing the Arlington uniform, and he would be carrying the Arlington gun and the things that have been, you know, provided for here. He won't be bringing a squad car, uh, it will be on his own time and at his own expense to get there. Uh, the state fair actually has their own police department, and they uh, function the same as we do. They have their own policies and procedures and requirements and basic training that they put you through, and then they also pair you up your first year with somebody who's been doing it for, you know, years on end. Uh, I would guess that it's gonna be a repeat, if it's a, um, good time, I guess, for him, uh, educational among everything else, but I, I would expect he's gonna ask to do it again the following year too, and as long as you guys are okay with it, I don't need to bring it to your attention again at another time. So.
If I see him out there, I want him to buy me a promo pump.
I'll leave that between you two. So I did put, I, I did attach the outside employment uh, policy that was on here, and if I didn't mention, at that point in time, he will be off probation. Um, anticipated to be off probation, I should say, and uh, everything is on track to indicate that that's gonna be the case. So if that is the direction we're going, he'll fall within the policy guidelines and we should be good to go.
Yeah.
Um. Just a concern, he uh, gets the taste of
The big city?
The big city, is that gonna attract him away from us?
Well, it's definitely gonna be a great networking tool for him. Um, you know, I've said since I took this position too, that I, I never want to hinder somebody's resume or slow them down in, in their career, if anything we can do to help, um. I hope he sticks around for, you know, a few years.
Sure.
And we get our work out of him, but um, it could happen anywhere, anytime. So.
Yeah. I think that'd be a great learning experience.
I do too.
I don't think you wanna hold somebody back.
Yeah. Yeah. So if that's good on that note, uh, that's that. Um, I had a real quick thing I wanted to mention on the parking violations. Uh, we currently are handing out these parking violations, and they are duplicate carbon copies, they come with a little envelope to put your money in and everything else. Uh, we are looking at actually getting rid of these and moving to just a state parking form with our city ordinances on it. So, I just wanna, I guess, make you guys aware, if somebody's coming up to you and asking you, why am I getting a state ticket? It's gonna look like a regular ticket, it's gonna have court date information on it, it's gonna look like a speeding ticket or anything else anybody else would be getting, but it will have our nuisance and our code uh, violations on here. So, Vicky and I were looking at redoing these, and the cost came up at about six hundred bucks for a box of them, and we're out of them right now. And we can save that money and we'll just use a couple more spools of paper from our printer and squad car. So, if you hear anything more about it, uh, that's where we're looking at going with it. The other change on here is, in the past, it has been given two weeks to come up and pay for this. That creates some huge administrative, not huge, but administrative delays for us. Um, people that are waiting, they forget about it, they lose it, they don't come in, they don't take care of it. When we move to the state accident forms, it's gonna allow us to follow up and keep on top of that, um, more timely. So, just throwing that out there to you, I don't think it's anything that's a big decision that needs to be made at all, it's just some progression that we're doing. And other than that, uh, this twenty-sixteen squad car is currently at Cars on Patrol. It's getting all set up and everything, and as sure as me, it'll be within the budget that we had talked about. The hiring process has been posted, and we're gonna be closing it on the twenty-sixth. And I say closing is kind of a loose term. Closing in the sense that we are then going to contact all the people that have applied. And at this point today, we've got ten people, ten applicants, there's an eleventh one that's kind of on the fence right now. Um, but I think that number is pretty darn good. So, looking forward to starting that process. We have the days started, I talked to Michelle and Tom about doing the interview process. Um, just a heads up to you guys, the plan would be that I'd like to have James and Sarah sitting on the interview panel with the police committee and um, city administrator Melvin, and that'll be the first interview. And then the second interview, I'd like it myself and uh, administrator Melvin and mayor, if you're available, and we'll have to pick that date yet.
Okay.
So, we'll try and work it around everybody's schedule.
Okay.
Um, but we are still on track, and if by chance we don't find somebody that meets the qualifications and the, the city's wants, you know, we can continue, we'll leave the process open until the position is actually filled. So, we can still be taking applications at that time. Uh, Sarah is gonna be going to a juvenile conference, so it's a Juven- Juvenile Officers Association Conference, it starts on Thursday. And uh, she'll be back on Friday for that. It's kind of a good introduction for her to get, um, kinda networking with other people that are doing school resource things and how to get involved more with juvenile things in the community, and uh, I'm just looking she comes back with for information for progressing that way too. Uh, Vicky and I are attending a class on Thursday, B C A, it's uh, I think a forty-five dollar class, pretty, pretty cheap for the six hours we'll be there. But it is based on dat- data privacy and releasing information. Uh, one thing that since I've gotten here, we've had a lot of inquiries about, can I get a copy of that report? Can I get a copy of my friend's report, and I just wanna make sure we're not making any errors on releasing information, so. Both Vicky and I are gonna be attending that, as she'll be taking over that administrative part of it too. Um, unfortunately, this weekend, I took the squad, uh, the Impala home, cause the battery and everything was dead every time we went to use it. And I charged the battery up again in the Impala, and for some, some reason, it took a full charge, and then it was dead the next day. So I took it down to R and R, had them look at it, and um, that was replaced, it was completely dead. It, the sulfur was coming out of it on the bottom.
So the battery was shot?
Battery shot, but that's the only problem, so as soon as a new one was in, it was firing right up. In addition to that, the twenty-seventeen battery was an issue, and the Ford Explorer was dying as well. Come to find out, they've had a problem with those batteries, and the warranty wasn't worth um, messing around with trying to get forty bucks back, so I just had R and R order a new one and put that one in the twenty-seventeen today also. So, both squads are running fine, other than those two issues, I'm sure the So both squads are running fine, other than those two issues, I'm sure the cold weather killed them. Uh. Yeah, oh, and James is ending up, he's gonna be going to a Taser instructor school. It's a necessity that we were looking at filling a position that can help fill, uh, some of the other agencies as well. And then we can cross train with the Sheriff's Department, with Gaylord and, and trying to do some. Helping each other out kinda stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And that was kind of the basis from a meeting where the sheriff, the new sheriff, has started coordinating a, I don't know if we're gonna do quarterly or every two months. Um, but a chief's meeting where the sheriff and the chief deputy and then all the chiefs will get together and we're gonna do a. Trying to keep on, on top of everybody's training schedule so that we're not missing anything and whatever information needs to be exchanged, so. It's been a pretty progressive first couple of weeks of January.
Good.
Yeah, hope it's, hope it keeps going.
Some positive things going on.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move into, uh, unfinished business, uh, item number nine, discussion regarding having a one-city-wide hauler for garbage and refuse. And we have representative here from Renville Sibley Sanitation and, uh. I don't know if you'd, uh, wanna come to the table, we may have some questions for you or if you have some comments to make. Use the microphone there and, uh, if you have some comments you wish to make on the subject.
Yep, I'm here to listen to what you guys have to say.
Okay.
Throw in some of our opinion.
Okay.
And whatnot.
All right.
I feel we have a, a pretty large investment in the city of Arlington. We got a, a call eight years ago when, uh, two other competitors sold out the waste management and said, hey, can you guys come here? And, um, cause we only have one hauler, now that was waste management. And we came to Arlington and we've been investing in Arlington, sponsoring events in Arlington ever since and continuing to grow and. You drive around and you see blue everywhere, there's a reason for it, cause we got good service and good prices.
Okay.
So, and, and allowing the people to choose is, is a, a good thing. And then, um, I was talking with Jim earlier on, uh, Sibley County's, uh, requirement for city contracts. That requires, uh, something like a full city contract to be processed and an expensive processor. Which in turn would be turned in, you know, reflecting the rates that are offered to the customers. And, and a lot of our city contracts that we have are actually higher priced rates because we have to go to this processor. Than what our open market rates are here. And you're a customer, you're a customer, these customers, customers behind us because we have good fair prices. People were looking for lower prices.
Mm-hmm.
Shop around and, and you'll find lower prices.
Are you the exclusive hauler in any other co- any community in the area?
We do Lafayette.
Lafayette?
Given, our hometown given.
Given?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if, if, I don't, we haven't even really talked about, if we decide to do this, would you be interested in suing the contract?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be interested in pursuing it, um, what would happen, would be more worth with less earnings because of the cost, the disposal cost. Will weigh up, uh, by about thirty-seven dollars a ton. So, but, uh, if I did bid and I would make sure that we protected our, what we have in town here, which is pretty significant.
Right.
So prices, uh, your prices actually would go up? Like what I'm paying now would go up if it was a citywide?
They could because of, because of the process, I checked with the processor up in Demcon, up in Chocopee who used to process, um. Out to Newport, they can no longer do that, so the only other processing alternative is without a mancato. Which is a pretty stiff tip fee, which could reflect, you know, if you guys, if you guys bid.
And that all occurs because of the county?
The county has their, the county has their public and the city contract ordinance to serve. You know, whatever is in the county, Gaylord's has to be processed, Wilshire pass has to be processed, Lafayette, uh, given.
So then your, your pickups and given have to be processed according to the county regulations?
Yep, they have to go out to the, we have to drive a two-hour round trip to bring this up.
Okay.
Which drives up the cost.
And this is for residential and everything?
For the residential, for a city contract residential.
Okay.
Your businesses, open market, that can go wherever we choose.
Mm-hmm.
So even if we went to one city hauler, we'd still have other haulers in here for commercial?
The commercial stuff. We're in town four days a week, you know, servicing the various needs of, of who needs what. And, and taking care of that, Tuesday we do all the residential stuff. And, um, just here to look at your input, see what you guys have, protect what we have invested in the city. And, um, it's a really good choice for the citizens. We, we take on four to six new residential stops every month. And we're kinda systematically eliminating the national hauler.
Okay, okay.
Between us and Gaylord, we've got streets that don't have waste management anymore. You know, if you're trying to reduce trucks on the road, let us keep doing what we're doing.
Right, so, so that's kinda. I mean, my concern obviously, there's, it, the trucks on the road, you know, you have multiple. But then the other one is like you mentioned, the other, I mean, they, they seem to play games with people, you know what I mean? I don't really care for that, I mean, you and the other hauler, I don't think, I mean, that's the price, the price, everybody pays the same thing, doesn't matter. Who you are, how long you've been with them, um, so that's the, I mean, the other hauler is the one I have an issue with. Just because it seems like not everybody pays the same price.
Another benefit that, that we do is the only customer we have in town that we have a contract with is the hospital because they require a contract. We don't have contracts for the customers, they stay with us and we continue to grow because we provide a good service and a good price.
Right.
And I think a lot of waste management customers are still with waste management because they can't get out of their contracts.
Hmm.
Which are a bear to get out of if you ever told them.
I have to know.
So if one of our stronger arguments to our citizens is that your price is going to go down if we go to one hauler. What I hear you saying is not necessarily.
It, it could go up.
It could go up.
Could go up.
Yeah, you can.
But it could go up for his pr- uh, service, but it might be, go down compared to.
To some.
Waste management or, or whoever it might be.
Yeah. Right.
Is there, uh, uh, no, it's always been three since I've been in town. I mean, is there something that says we have to have three, are we in contract with the, is that a yearly thing that, that we renew?
No, that was, that's by ordinance, uh, we're allowing three licensed haulers in town, no more than three. It was more than three at one time, I think it was wide open. So I think there was a time when, what's the one out of the sewer? Can't remember it, they would come in, I think there were four or five at one time. You go back forty or fifty years ago and there was one. So.
Well, I think a couple of the haulers that were in the area sold out to waste management or another company and then they.
Mm-hmm.
Consolidated, you know, that happens a lot. Um. Yeah, I, I just, I just like the, uh, idea of having a choice. You know, rather than you're stuck with this guy for three years or two years, whatever the contract for the city is gonna be. Whether you like him or not and, uh. You know, service starts to fall off the, off the edge, it'd be nice to be able to get somebody else to handle it.
Well, as of January first, if you read, read the material, you have the, the first contract has to be a seven-year contract.
Seven years?
Seven years for the first one. And after that, it has to be at least three, between three and seven years. So, um, and that just happened January first now, there's, uh, some pretty stringent changes happened. Just a few weeks ago.
And to set up a whole city, there's a lot of investment, you got like a hundred and ten bucks per house. You know, to set up carts, recycling carts, trash carts. There's a lot of investments, you want, the hauler wants a longer contract, a two or three-year contract.
Okay, I see.
Not gonna make his money back.
Yeah.
On his investment.
Startup costs.
End up with a thousand dirty cans of, or two thousand, how many houses are in there?
What's that?
How many houses are in there?
I don't know. For some reason I was thinking, uh, utility bills are like twelve hundred, something like that.
You got four hundred cans that a horse gotta buy.
Can't be that many.
Can't be that many. Yeah.
Right.
You know, the other thing too, I, I suppose if we had a, one hauler, every resident would have to be, or every household would be signed up for, for collection.
Because they would be billed through the city billing process?
Right. You know, in my case, and then I'm sure I'm not the only one. I take my household garbage and bring it down to the car lot because half the time my dumpster is half full or three quarters.
Mm-hmm.
Even with the business and the house in there. So then if you went to the one hauler, then I'd, now I'd have two.
You'd have two.
Two garbage bins.
Yeah.
So it cost me double.
And you don't like getting things in the mail that much?
No.
That you wanna get an extra one?
No.
Well, I mean, I think for the city, it's, we're paying more costs with, eh, eh, within the administration. Regardless of what we feel, if it's an easy one line and done, you don't have to mess with it, it's still work that has to be done in admin. There's still gonna be, if there's higher cost and then we're eliminating the people's choice and what they wanna, who they wanna choose, who, who they want. I mean, I, I guess for me, I, I'd like to keep the choice out there for everybody.
And just looking around the table, I'm guessing, I mean, walking out of the meeting last week or two weeks ago, I mean. There's three of us, we're talking, we all three had just somebody different, you know, so I mean, there's. You're, you're changing a lot of people.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how much you, I mean, you'd like to think it's gonna be less trucks on the road. I don't know how much, how much less it would get, how much of a difference that would really make.
Yeah.
Well, you said you're in town four times a week already?
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. You know, taking care of various, everybody, the main residential stuff is all about on Tuesday. Commercial customers, some of them need twice a week, some of them need once a week. So either way, we're in town four days a week anyways, so. Driving trucks on the road.
Well, and I guess, you know, the big argument is, is that we're gonna have less truck traffic or try to have less truck traffic or not as many. Instead of having three garbage trucks running down the same road, we'll only have one.
It's, it's not as bad as the bigger cities where you've got ten, twelve competitors that go to market.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
You got thirty, you don't have a dozen trucks going down the same road. The one thing I'd like to see eliminated is alleys.
Eliminate it, the alleys? I don't know if.
Alley pickup?
Yeah.
Is there much alley pickup in Arlington except on Main Street, right?
In the, in the springtime, when they have the restrictions, it actually cuts an hour off of our routes.
Yeah, cause then they have to bring it out.
Cause we gotta go down the alley, one way to the road, go back the other way.
Yeah.
We're going down the street too, you gotta do the street, both sides of the alley.
Yep.
Both sides of the alley, so you got four passes. But that, that's, that's our choice, whether, I guess, whether we go down the alleys or not, what we do with, cause the customers want us to.
You had mentioned earlier that, uh, part of the challenge is, is the way that the county's structured in terms of where you can take your material?
Yeah.
Is that something that the county can change to facilitate or make it more efficient?
Well, we, a few years back, we looked at another processor up in Demco- Demcon of their Chocopee. They were processing at the time, uh, they didn't have a firm way to track how they processed it. So then they had, at the last minute, they backed out of it. Now they don't do any processing anymore because the processor over in Newport, uh, Washington or Ramsey County blocked that processor. And they don't want any other county waste now. So the only processor left down here that we could use was down in Mancato. And because we have to take it there, there's no price negotiation. I could walk to this scale there and negotiate prices on tip fees. Based on our volume, we bring more volume, we get lower prices. Down there, it's, this is your price, take it or leave it.
Okay.
Because they know.
So without a city contract, you can still go up to Triski and dump there? If you get a city contract, you have to take it to Mancato.
Yeah, to Mancato. Whether I do it or Waste does it, or Fraunty's does it, GSI, it used to be Fraunty's. But, uh. It's kinda where it's at.
So could the, could the company change that to allow you to go to either?
Uh, Al, Al is, Al is pretty staunch on the hierarchy of processing if it can be, if it can be processed, so, you know. If you ever change that. You know, if there's another, another avenue, another place that can process it, you know, where they can track it properly, then, then that's allowed. But there isn't another one, so.
I mean, for me, just listening to talk, all of the positives that we were thinking before are pretty much gone besides the less truck, truck traffic.
You can do research, you can do, you guys can do your own research, I'm just giving you our experience.
Right. Yeah.
We've been in it for fifteen years.
Mm-hmm.
This is a big chunk of our business here, we go all the way from, from Redwood Falls over to the river over here and then hutch down to Newall. I think we cover seven counties and, and, um. Arlington's good to us, so, you know, we sponsor, we do racetrack days over there for the kids and sponsor early to have some. I haven't done the parade for a couple of years, cause I haven't had no help, so. But, uh, yeah, we like it.
Okay, have we had a lot of people requesting one, you know, I guess, I?
Personally, I've had nobody contact me. That said we should do that, or we should even look into.
I was asking Jim how it came about, how the discussion.
We had one council member that was approached. I, uh, I don't know how many people, yeah, a couple residents and wondered why we didn't do it that way, so.
If, if someone thinks they're paying too much, if we found people paying two and three times what we charge.
Mm-hmm.
Tell them shop around, we used to help people buy out of their contracts with the big guys. It costs a lot of money, but we don't do it for more.
No, if they are in contracts with your, with your competitor and we all know who that is.
Yep.
Uh, how, don't those contracts end? I mean, isn't there a?
They end, you gotta, you gotta give them, there's a ninety-day window.
Oh, if you don't give them notice, then it automatically renews, I suppose.
Yeah, if you don't touch it, it automatically renews, you gotta pay them fifty bucks to come get their cans.
Yeah.
But you, you can, I mean, if you're persistent and you just tell them you want out, they will let you out. But a lot of, a lot of people will not stand up and just say, no.
Yeah.
To, you know, cause I mean, they do kinda make you feel like you're totally locked in.
Yeah.
I, I, I talked to a guy at a body shop up in Glencoe the other day, he's got the big green guys. And I gave him my price and I says, just for fun, what are you paying? And he said, five times what you quoted me for him to get out of his contract, it's gonna cost him three thousand five hundred dollars.
No!
So he's gonna have to ride it out some more.
Oh.
Get his buyout down. Uh, the business, you don't see many green business dumpsters around here, there's three or four maybe, tops.
Yeah.
Cause we helped people get out of that. But, uh.
Hmm.
Food for thought.
Okay.
Well, I don't see a burning need to. You know, if the audience, all the chairs are full and the standing room only on the hall, then I think we probably wouldn't take another look at it, but.
That is probably what would've happened if we would've taken this any further. Cause there would've been people standing on the hall.
But you guys, you guys are in the green steps, city pro, right?
Yes.
And I know that's one of their things too, it's, it's a suggested thing. I don't think it's, how far have you guys gone on that?
Three.
Three, three steps, yeah.
That's a suggested item, it's a required item.
You mean to, to move towards organized?
Step.
Yeah.
Really?
How far guys are going with that or not, but.
Okay.
That's our.
They, they're all suggested items or whatever on that list, you just pick what you can and do what we can.
Yeah, it was percentage of each, I have to get the next steps, stuff like that, so.
Okay, well.
And I admit your can fell over today and I didn't pick it up.
Shandown.
The, the little thirty gallons, when you set them down, if it's even slightly off level, we go.
It happens.
Okay, well, thank you for your input, appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yes, your input, eh, the discussion's done, or, what was our question?
Well, well, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I don't think I need to talk about it anymore.
No.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I'll go home in a bit, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Turned us off.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, we'll see ya.
I don't know. Do you know Bruce's last name?
Yes.
Yes? Bruce, yes, Bruce, yes, that's.
You got the P.
Bruce P, alright.
I'll think of it.
Have to Google it, Google it. Okay, eh, item ten, approve or deny employee reviews conducted on January seventh, closed council meeting?
Council members, this is just a follow-up, eh, to, eh, the previous, eh, closed meeting that we had to talk about employee performance evaluations. At that time, we went through and talked about, eh, all, eh, City of Arlington staff and their performance evaluations that had been conducted. Just looking for your approval at this time to acknowledge that that was done and that, eh, employees received, eh, SAS factory or better, eh, performance evaluations.
Which they did.
Eh, make a motion to approve employee review conducted at January seventh, closed council meeting.
Second?
Second.
Councilman, eh, Howell moved to, eh, approve the employee reviews conducted in January seventh council meeting, and second by council member Highland. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Move on to new business, item eleven, approve or deny EDA's recommendation to lower the selling price for TSE building?
The EDA is making a recommendation to the council to drop the selling price to one hundred thousand dollars. Eh, at the last EDA meeting, eh, Amy Newsom had done some analysis based on other properties in Arlington that had sold, eh, recently. Recently sold. Her, based on what she looked at, property, eh, the percent of increase from appraised value to what it sold for, she was recommending that the TSE building be listed at a hundred and fourteen thousand up to a hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah.
I believe.
Somewhere in that, yeah.
In that ballpark, so, eh, further discussion among the EDA, eh, they concluded that, eh, a selling price of one hundred thousand, was what was needed, was adequate.
But there wasn't anybody waiting at the door to walk in and take it over?
We, no, we're, they recommended that price that we dropped it.
Yeah. We, we've had showings of the TSE building, eh, we just haven't had anybody who's gone beyond looking at the building.
I, I think we've had the building long enough.
You think we would?
We've had the building long enough.
I think so too.
Would.
I think so too.
Well, I would, I would like the CSP under a hundred thousand dollars if we're gonna be there. So I would recommend that we list it at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
There is something to be said for that?
I'll second that, if that's a motion, Jim.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that a motion, Jim?
That would be a motion, yes.
I'll second that motion.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I, I was good.
So what's the final number?
Ninety-nine nine?
Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Ninety-nine nine, okay.
So and the realtor's commission will be off of the listed price, right? Even if we sell it for a dollar because the business comes in with jobs, um, she'll still get the listed price commission?
I would think so.
Yep.
Yep.
Same contract, I think, or just changing the sale price.
Yeah, and so in the contract, it said for listed price at the time. So moving forward, it would be commission off of the ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Or, yeah, whatever it's listed for, and that will be sold for.
And I would like, you know, being under a hundred thousand dollars, if somebody's searching.
Right.
For something in the nine hundred, you know, under a hundred thousand.
It'll, at least it'll pop up, yeah. Alright, motion? By council member Highland, second by council member Ratcher, to, um, list the, eh, EDA, or the, um, TSE building for sale at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. I assume that'll be effective immediately, we have a new contract.
Well, that starts February.
February one.
But I'm sure, um, we'll probably put that out there, or EDA will put that out there, advertise.
Mm-hmm.
Let Amy know right away.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So we're under, are we under contract with our previous one yet, until we first?
No, it's, 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 yeah, it's nobody until I think February.
With nobody right now? Okay. February first, yeah, alright.
Say, Mayor?
Yes?
His last name is Priggy, P-R-I-G-G-Y.
P-R-I?
G-G-Y.
G-G-Y.
Is that?
Yeah, you knew that.
You got the first letter, right?
I-G-G-Y, wow. Never seen that name before. Thank you.
Jim, what I got?
Jim, what I got? Okay, item twelve, review water usage at the fairgrounds.
Council members, eh, since we have made the, eh, eh, improvement to install the meter out at the fairgrounds, that was done, eh, in November of two thousand seventeen, eh, at the last council meeting, the question came up, what is the amount of water that's being used out there? Eh, it is structured so that, eh, the fairgrounds is able to water, to monitor the amount of water that they use, but they're also able to separate how much water is being used in the Legion Building. So Lisa, eh, was kind enough to put together a report, eh, showing you the amount of water, eh, that they have been using eh, since the improvement was made. As you can see, eh, looking down there, for the period of the fourteen months, they have used two hundred and thirty-eight thousand sixteen gallons of water. Eh, one thing that I will point out is that during the time period of, eh, of about November seventeen through early January of eighteen, eh, there was a leak detected, eh, somewhere in the pipe. We, we believe that probably about sixty thousand gallons, eh, was unfortunately leaked during that period of time. The amount that we previously were, were billing the fairgrounds for, eh, was a hundred and fifty-two thousand eh, gallons of water per year. Eh, if you subtract out what we believe that leak caused, about sixty-four thousand, eh, we're about thirty-some thousand more than that number in terms of actual usage. So we were pretty close, eh, now we're able to obviously, eh, measure it much closer, and we're able to detect if there are any problems out there, which is a benefit. So, eh, without question, I think that was the right, eh, decision that you guys made to, to meter that and to start tracking that, so. Eh, we are now being paid for, eh, t- two hundred and thirty-eight thousand sixteen gallons of water, eh, is what we were paid for, eh, since we have installed the, the meter, so. Are there any questions?
So the Legion Building pays separately?
Correct.
Okay, and then the grandstand, and the bathroom, and the racetrack, do they pay separately?
They are all included.
Isn't that, wasn't that an already metered?
I think so.
I think that was already.
Yeah.
Already metered prior to this.
I think so. Yep, there are existing meters that are on the racetrack account, the bathroom and the grandstands are both on the racetrack account.
So those, those are not in the two, two hundred and thirty-eight, okay.
Correct.
So then everything, that, all the water that gets used on the whole fairgrounds is metered right now?
At this point, yes.
That's the way it should be. Okay. Any questions on that, comments?
Oh, thank you for putting that together.
Lisa did all the work, so.
I left some burning questions in my mind that I don't have to worry about.
Yes. You'll sleep well tonight, right, Jim?
Boy, sleep like a baby.
Alright, item thirteen, schedule workshop February fourth to discuss twenty nineteen city council goals?
One of the items that we previously talked about, council members, is the, the need to put together some goals so that we can sit down and have a, a workshop with the planning committee as well as the EDA to talk about long-term goals. Eh, I have sent an email to, eh, Cin- Cynthia Smith-Strack as well as Amy Newsom, eh, asking them for any goals that they wish to have the council consider as they're starting to put together preliminary goals. There may be some goals that pop up in our workshop with the other two committees that you would like to add to yours, but, eh, we, I would like at this time, if we could schedule, to have a council workshop before the council meeting on February fourth to talk about goals for two thousand nineteen. So, I've provided you in advance with some information, eh, including, eh, what we put together based on our strategic session with, eh, Craig Waldron. Eh, I've included, eh, a copy of what the public voted for when they met with us on April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, and also provide a copy of what, eh, we put together for the two thousand eighteen Arlington City Council goals. I've also received some input from a few council members, eh, which have been, eh, sh- shared with, eh, Rich, and can be further discussed in our workshop on February fourth. Any questions or comments?
What time?
We, I was proposing that we do a five-thirty. What, is an hour enough time? Five-thirty or five o'clock, if you prefer?
How does that work for you, Adam?
Well, it don't matter, I agree, really, either ways. Five-thirty, I guess, I'd prefer, if that's enough time.
I was just wondering if that would be enough time to go over that.
Or we could do five.
We're gonna have to have a process by which we rank them, or something, I guess, you know, rather than, I mean.
We can do, just like what we did in the strategic, eh, session, which is list them and then put stickies.
Somehow, something to.
For your top couple of goals.
Some, something to get to the point quicker, I think, rather than.
So is everybody turning in their top, how many to you?
Eh, top three or four is what we had asked for.
Three or four is all?
Yep.
Yeah, we can do five o'clock.
Five o'clock? Okay, five o'clock on the fourth.
So if you haven't, if you would please, three or four of your top goals for two thousand nineteen.
Do you want us to send you beforehand?
If you would, please. I'll compile them and make sure the rich is aware of them.
Alright, February fourth, five P M workshop. Eh, moving on to item fourteen, approve or deny revision of the benefits for administrative assistant position?
Council members, eh, when we've had some previous, eh, discussion, I'm, I've made you aware of the fact that, eh, Laura Dykoff is currently working in our office at thirty-two, eh, hours, eh, a week. Eh, she's doing a wonderful job. Eh, she currently, in terms of benefits, has, eh, prorated, eh, health insurance and receives, eh, para, eh, as well at, at a prorated amount. The one thing that we didn't do, and there wasn't a whole lot of discussion on this when it came up in a previous council meeting, I think that a few of you were surprised by the fact that we do not have any, eh, holiday pay for Laura at this time. Eh, the reason why we went that route is because we currently don't offer part-time employees any holiday pay. However, Laura is different, eh, definitely a different type of part-time employee in that she's working thirty-two hours a week. The part-time employees that we have otherwise, in most cases, are working less than, say, twelve hours a week. So I guess I would ask for your consideration, eh, that we maybe, eh, give her, eh, prorated holiday pay and possibly, eh, make that retroactive to January of two thousand nineteen.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
Um, does she typically have, like, the same hours each week? Like, does she typically work, um, seven hours a day and then maybe three on Friday, or eight hours a day, Monday through Thursday, or? What are her, what are her typical, what's, is it set?
Typically, typically eight hours Monday through Thursday. I'm probably going to ask her to, to modify that because it tends to be time, I really could use her as on Friday as board packets are due, and that's the day that she's gone, so, um.
So maybe Monday off would be better, or Wednesday or something?
Yeah, I would like the flexibility to have that discussion with her to see if she could do something that would allow her to be there on Friday as we're putting together the packet, some of that stuff.
Well, the reason why I ask that, because if, if she's here, like, on a set days, and her day that she's supposed to be here is a Monday, and she typically works an eight-hour day, and it's a holiday, why wouldn't we be giving her holiday pay for that day that she's scheduled?
I believe it was with the intent to be consistent with what we've done with other employees, and again, not making a distinction between an employee who, you know, works part-time, um, you know, ten hours a week versus an employee who works thirty-two hours a week, but there is a difference, I think, eh, in looking at that, so.
I'm just wondering if, if we do this, if we should somehow change the policy instead of just making, like, this one-time thing, I mean, you know what I mean, and I don't know how often we'll have a thirty-two-hour-a-week employee, but I don't know if we should really stray from policy with changing the policy. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to change the policy, but I think we should have that in there, rather than just changing it.
And I guess what we're doing is not so much following policy, but following practice. Our practice is that we typically don't provide, um.
So there's nothing in policy about part-time employees, no holiday, okay?
It's our past practice.
Some jobs are thirty-two hour a week. Full-time.
Right.
And, you know, we, we could call this full-time, but thirty-two hours, full-time. That's something we could consider.
Yep, it's certainly up to the, eh, up to the employer to make that determination. Having come from a county background, eh, thirty-two hours was considered the minimum for full-time status.
Um, what if, what about running it through, um, Employee Relations Committee? Looking at the policy and bringing back a recommendation to the council?
We'd still retroactive it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, oh, absolutely, I think as a council, we can.
Sure.
Um, suggestion can come from the committee or whatever, but if the committee can meet, like, the next week or two, so that we can bring it back by next council meeting, so we're taking care of it before, sooner than later. I think that's something that, like you said, Adam, I mean, it should be policy-based, it shouldn't be practice.
Right, yeah, there should.
I, I don't, I don't wanna make, I don't wanna change the rules for just one person, I want it across the board.
Yeah.
So if we were to change for status to full-time at thirty-two hours, that would. that would, that would change the health insurance and the holidays and P R A.
I, I don't know if it would or not. I mean, technically or whatever, you can still be full-time employee, maybe it, our contract would free maybe eleven months or whatever it would be. But we don't have that where you still are prorated for your health insurance, you're still prorated for your HSA that you're getting. But you get like the basic holiday pay you get if it lands on the day that you're supposed to work type stuff, you know? I, I mean, I don't, I think, I think, I think the Employee Relation Committee should have a good policy.
Discuss at the committee level, that's what committees are for.
And we can put together a policy that specifically addresses a thirty-two-hour position. And then have that written into policy as to what that means for health insurance, what that means for vacation.
Yep.
P T O.
Okay, I would entertain the motion to table this matter and send it to committee.
Motion to table and send it to committee.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Cowell to table the, uh, revision of the benefits administrative assistant position and send it to the Employee Relations Committee for a recommendation back to the council. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
If it was known, motion carried.
Just one more thing on that, Pat, in the meantime, you could talk to Laura about what days or you want her to work or what schedule you want her to work.
And then what would it add to the budget if, if we were to hire her at full-time at forty hours?
I think we're looking at about six, six or seven thousand.
For the year?
For the year. I guess take a look at the whole position and just see what is the best option at this point. She's doing a fantastic job and I've witnessed her, uh, been around when she's...
We've got a lot of copying that needs to be done, isn't there?
You know, one of the police records are, but they can't do that.
They can't do that, but there's a lot of records here that need to be scanned and...
If you care to take a look after the meeting, I can show you a closet that is full of boxes. We are running out of space to to keep packing things in there, so...
Take it home and put it in your basement.
I do have a fireplace, that's right.
There, there are a number, and I will bring that to the committee, there are a number of things that we aren't able to do. Now, Annie has just, you know, gotten back and I think Annie's in the process of, of getting caught up on what, you know, accumulated while she was out. But my hope is that we can stabilize administration and start tackling some of these issues which have been, you know, put on the back burner because we haven't had the time to deal with them. I have, just looking at the Novus Agenda software, I have, you know, a long list of meetings that I need to go through and confirm, verify that they are complete and accurate dating back to two thousand sixteen, so there's things that haven't been getting done in order to keep things going. My hope is that, you know, once Annie gets caught up and gets going full speed, that Laura can do that, but there's no doubt in my mind, and if you talk to anybody else in the Administration Department, they would agree that there's work there to add one more day that she could be, could be doing. I think that Administration works a lot with other departments and works on a variety of different issues, and I think it would benefit the organization all around to have that extra help. And I won't even say extra, to have that needed help.
I'm, I'm feeling we're beating it with a stick and we're not really... we want it, but we're not, nobody's making this step to say, but let's just do it because we have the need.
Well, we did just raise it by a quarter, quarter.
Yeah.
So, and we, and we haven't felt that yet because we haven't had Annie.
Right.
So I'd like to see what it feels like for a while when we're and then see what's going on.
I know, scanning and electronically saving all these, like you say, boxes and paper, that's, we talked about that three or four years ago.
Right.
Getting somebody in to do that. So, it's, it's time. All right, let's move on to item number fifteen, approve or deny the situation with the Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight actuarial evaluation.
Council members, I believe each of you received a letter dated January third, two thousand nineteen from the state auditor Rebecca Otto. In that letter, uh, she indicates that, uh, the city has, uh, has not been, uh, getting actuar, actuarial information related to the Fire Relief Association, and that is something that is noted in our audit. So, uh, recommendation is that we should proceed to start addressing that issue. And in an attempt to do so, I did reach out to our state auditor, or I should say our city auditor, Tom Ollinger, sharing with him this letter and asking him what his recommendation is. He suggested that I reach out to several actuariales to get the cost estimate as to what it would, uh, what they would charge for doing the work that's needed. Included in your package is a quote from Hildy Incorporated as well as Van I Warden. As you can see, both of them are qualified and competent to provide the service that we need. If you look at Hildy Incorporated, they are willing to, uh, do the actuarial valuation on the base year for a cost of two thousand two hundred. Basically, on a base year, uh, there's gonna be a little more work involved in putting together the numbers. And then every other year, it's going to be a projection year, which basically means that you can go off of previous numbers, so their costs would be two thousand two hundred for a base year and one thousand dollars for a projection year where they use previous numbers to come up with what the costs, what the actuarial numbers would be. The other one that we compared it with is I Warden. Their cost would be two thousand five hundred for the base year and then one thousand dollars for the off-year.
And what I like about the Hildy is that they are already working with public pension plans, police and fire funds, other communities. So I think, uh, and with the savings that we get, the three hundred dollar savings, I would like to make a motion to approve the contact with Hildy Inc.
Second?
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Highland to approve the contract with Hildy Inc. for Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight actuarial evaluation for the Fire Relief Association. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
If it was no, motion carried. All right, moving on to miscellaneous business, item sixteen, council member committee updates. Northland Drining, Pat, did you have anything on Northland Drining?
Council members, I thought that I would probably have a report in my hand at this point, but I do not. I know that we will be, uh, getting one, uh, this week, which will be, uh, conclusions based on the noise testing that, uh, that they did over the course of several days, uh, out there at Northland Drining, so... I have heard from several residents that the noise seems to be, seems to be a lot quieter out there. I don't know if that's something related to operations, as oftentimes they'll have a piece of equipment or something that'll go down, uh, and then they won't be operating for a, a period of time. But, uh, that should be coming, like I said, this week, and once that does come, we will share that information with, uh, with you, the council, certainly, as well as, uh, Northland Drining and residents so that we're all, all aware of where we stand, and then we can start talking seriously about what needs to be done next to, uh, address the noise levels. I believe from preliminary tests, I believe that there, there may be some changes that are needed.
Well, I tell you what, it was so loud those couple of days, like that, the days that they were doing the testing. And it does seem like it's gotten quieter since then. Now, I don't know whether or what happened, but I don't...
There's been days when they haven't been running too, for some reason.
I think it's been, um, I think a lot of people were concerned that they were gonna somehow be quieter during the testing. But, you know, like they explained, it's either on or off.
It's either on or off, you can't, yeah.
I think it's just wind direction or what hap, or reflection off or deflection off of buildings and structures and stuff, so... I'm very anxious to get the, the report.
Okay, any other, uh, council member committee updates?
I, before I came to the ninth meeting, I went to the hospital, uh, board and, uh, they had a dual meeting, an actua, their annual meeting, just going through formalities like we, with the city council, filling officers, uh, and committee members and, um, they, uh, somebody suggested that they look into the role of a board member, giving them a description so that they have a better idea of what they're attending the meeting and what to do. And the next ma, meeting, the, uh, secretary will, uh, bring a job description along, she's got it, and, but it's something that from time to time needs to be brought up. Doctor Rude, uh, mentioned that he read an article in the Star Tribune about the procedure. Oh, actually, that was the big, the procedure expenses on any, anything that they get done. But the problem with what was in the paper was coded, so you didn't know, you weren't comparing apples to apples because you didn't know what you were comparing to. They only had numbers and they're coded. But that's something that will be coming up and they've been talking about, uh, at previous meetings is let the consumer know what they're getting, you know, like when you shop for a car, you know, what, what extras you want. And you can do the same, they're gonna do the same thing with, with, uh, healthcare. Um, from that meeting, they went into, uh, a presentation on, um, branding the hospital. Why, they should, they feel they should have a bigger share of the, the market. What, they're gonna try to figure out what will bring patients to the hospital. There are, uh, they feel there's too many going elsewhere. And there's, what did they say, four hospitals, eleven clinics that they're servicing in their, their organization, um, which I thought is quite impressive, and it also gives the patients an opportunity to stay in the system and, and maybe go to a facility that's closer by to make it more convenient. They have focused on talking to the clients. Oh, I just, uh, I, I just told you that, sorry. I, I didn't have a chance to review from the, the meeting. I'd, uh, they're gonna do, uh, ads in Facebook, Instagram, other programs, um, there'll be bill, billboards, newspaper ads, blogs, magnets, I wasn't sure what that was. And, and staff can recruit as well. They're gonna do a big focus and a, a big promotion on urgent care. And, uh, use local talent for the pictures, people know, oh, that's so-and-so and so-and-so child, so that, you know, an effective way to, um, advertise with, with the people that are from the area. They're looking forward to this summer to celebrate the new building being completed. Their motto is, "You matter here." And I, I've told you that many times, but I really am impressed with that, that motto. And it's the Ridgeview way. And then another program they're gonna work on is "Stop the Flu, Get Vaccinated Today," and then I left.
Did you get vaccinated, that's good.
Okay, anything else?
We got meetings coming up this week with the fire department officers and the ambulance and, uh, fire department meeting, and then...
With the townships?
Townships.
Townships and City of Greena. Thursday. Okay, anything else?
The, uh, Administration Department, uh, received a new copier, we looked at, uh, lease rates. We had the option to purchase, uh, the old copier that we had. We looked at the costs and the age, uh, of the existing copier and, uh, we found that by going with a new copier, we could actually drop our, our monthly payment. Uh, so we went ahead and proceeded to do that. We also took a look at the police department, which has an even older copier, uh, took a look at the cost per month to do that. Found out that we could go with a newer copier there and, uh, decrease the amount that we're paying per month. So, uh, both Administration and Police Department have new copiers that we have on lease. And again, we're paying less than what we were for the old, uh, copiers that, uh, have seen some better days. And obviously, as they get older, are in need of more repair and have more things going.
So the monthly payments are for the lease payment, but also that buys a service, any kind of service you need on them, or is service over?
Correct, yep. Any repairs, anything goes wrong, it's covered, so...
Okay. All right, anything else under open discussion? Hearing none, we're going to move into a closed session. I would kindly ask our audience to leave. And, uh, this closed session will be for the evaluation of our city administrators. And Pat, if I could have you leave for a few minutes also, do we, do we record the closed session or do we not? Okay, we're back in at the regular meeting at nine-eleven. I suppose if there's, if there's nobody else around, I could mention it. I don't know if anyone has any comment about the article that should not have been in the paper last week about the ambulance service, that was, uh, the group that was meeting was doing it legally. We had no more that we did not have a quorum there of Arlington City Council members, nor did, uh, Gaylord have a quorum of theirs. The thought was to keep, keep the lid on until we had some concrete news to bring and then release it to both papers at the same time.
Both communities at the same time.
Both communities at the same time.
And not through the newspaper, through public meetings.
Yeah.
How did it get in the paper?
A, a request was made by, uh, Kurt Mink to have some information about what was going on. Supposedly there are individuals, I don't know if it's in the public or in his office, that have been talking about this and are wondering why there's been nothing in the paper, so request was made for information on a complete summary of what has been discussed to date. I reached out and talked with, uh, Gerald. I reached out and talked with Gerald Roddy, Roddy, from Ridgeview and Lori. Went ahead and put together a brief summary. And my thought was that that would then be put into the Gaylord newspaper that same week. It did not get in there and it got put on the front page, so it was not what I anticipated. We have, a person can make a data request and then the city has a period of time to respond to that. In hindsight, could I have said, I don't have time, you know, I, in hindsight, I could have taken more time. It would have gone past the printing timeline for him, which would have created, you know, a difficult relationship. Obviously, you try and maintain a good relationship with the newspaper, but then the information would not have gotten out there from Arlington. A week in advance of when it got out into Gaylord, which I know is something that we were trying to avoid.
So was Joe upset at Gaylord up on not getting the scoop or?
I haven't heard, I don't know the answer to that.
So I think, I, one comment I did make to Pat is that from now on, if, if a release is going to go out, it does not go out any earlier than Wednesday afternoon. That way, it would miss the Arlington paper, but it would get to both the papers in time for the following week. Because I think I would, I would imagine probably Gaylord's deadline is Tuesday noon, their paper comes out a day sooner. So, so Tuesday noon it would hit them, you know, or Tuesday morning it would, it would get to them. But anyhow, to be, to be cognizant of, of the deadlines for the papers so that it has the ability to get into both papers. If Joe doesn't get it in, well, that's his problem. I know we did have a problem when we were meeting with trying to get the police departments together. We would, we would inform both papers that we're having a meeting tonight. Kurt would show up, Joe wouldn't. So what are you gonna do, you know?
Well, at that point, there's not much you can do.
Not much you can do, except say, hey, you know, they're getting the same notice that.
Right.
About the meeting, so. So anyhow, I don't know if you, have you heard any comments out in the community as far as? No, I didn't either, I haven't either. So, that's good, I guess.
Did you hear anything, Pat?
I have not.
Just to summarize, the, the atmosphere of the meetings, it's very positive. I mean, it is very positive. I think everyone is seeing that, that it's, it's a move that is going to be beneficial to the whole area. So, we're gonna continue to move forward. All right, anything else?
Do we gotta do this, number nineteen?
Yep.
What's that, number nineteen?
I'll make a.
Oh, yes.
Motion to approve city administrator review.
Um, you can add to that with a three percent.
With a three percent pay increase.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batcher to approve the city administrator review. City Administrator Melvin would be offered and has accepted a three percent increase for calendar year twenty nineteen. Any more discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
If it was no, motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
May.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Cowell to adjourn the council meeting. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned at nine seventeen.
Nine seventeen!
Yes.